One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for coming this evening. We have a couple of board members missing, Mike Marie and Stacy Rell, and Sue Ann will not be with us either tonight, and our new student council representative is here, so a little bit short, but I'm sure we'll do fine. But with Mike missing, or Stacy missing, I'm sorry, I need to appoint a quick treasurer. So Tom, would you be willing to do that? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? By Eric, second.
Second.
By Tom. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. On our consent agenda this evening is the check wire transfer disbursement summary, bank reconciliation statement, board meeting minutes from June 4th, special meeting on June 11th, and the study session on June 25th. Donations as follows: $350 from A. Johnson to Hidden Oaks Middle School for new technology, Wells Fargo Foundation education matching gift program, Jill Farley, $192, Brian Kaiser, $818, Diane Hay, $600, Jane Campan, $55.19, Shane and Abby Coachera, $77, the Honda Silverwing motorcycle for the industrial technology department of Prior Lake High School at a value of $500 from Michael Cooper, $30 from Angel Sharit for Hidden Oaks Middle School, and $10.78 from Laura Willett for Hidden Oaks Middle School. And the resignations as listed. MSBA membership renewal, this will be for the, this is the annual membership, it's also for the policy service manual fee approval, and then the Metro Exu membership renewal for 2012-13. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So.
By Todd, second.
I will second it.
By Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Now we come to our special event of the evening. This is, I guess, a Laker pride showcase recognition all in one. Sue Heaton.
Thank you. I'm here actually to present.
Just second, Sue.
Oh.
I know you can talk loud, but not shy down at all.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Sue Heaton, and I'm with the Prior Lake Optimists Club, and every year, the Optimists Club, I think for the last 30 years, has presented a piece of art from one of our senior, or from one of our students at the high school. This year, it is Mason Lidle, and we have here the piece that was selected by the Optimists Club, and unfortunately Mason could not be with us tonight, but he will be rewarded for his efforts, which is always nice for an artist, and the school will be rewarded with this beautiful painting. So, thank you.
Sue, do you know what any of it means?
I was hoping that Mason was here to interpret it, because I mentioned that if I had to interpret it, it might not be for a public hearing. So, you know, I think we should just enjoy it the way it is.
Sounds good.
You know?
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our open forum. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on an item that we do not have on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to personnel. Matt?
All right. First off, I'd like to recommend the approval of the following candidates for employment.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment?
So.
By Tom, second.
Second.
By Todd. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
And secondly, I would like to recommend the approval of the new assistant principal candidate at the Prior Lake High School, Heather Fitzlock.
Do I have a motion to accept the new candidate for assistant principal of high school?
So.
That's right. Todd?
My Todd, second.
Second.
My Tom. Dave, would you like to say anything about our new assistant?
A unanimous decision to run interviews by both panels comes to us with a lot of experience, AD, AP, and head principal experience. Originally taught in the Lakeville area and went to Wisconsin to be principal, and through some job relocation and family finds herself back here, and we're extremely happy to have her as part of our team.
Okay. Jeff, did you have anything to add? I don't know who else was involved. Matt?
I was involved, and what I can say on behalf of the hiring committee is that it was a unanimous decision, and all parties involved were very excited that Heather coming up.
Great, and my understanding is Heather may be able to be at our meeting in August to be introduced.
Yes.
Okay, great. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Next, I present the following needs of absence and receiving board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the needs of absence?
So.
By Eric, second. By Todd. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
And next, I'm making a recommendation for additional staffing. This comes in the form of an addition, of a B squad girls tennis coaching, and the need for this position has arisen due to the numbers in the girls tennis program. There's currently a record number of athletes participating in the program, and it's necessitated this additional role.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the additional staffing for the girls tennis? By Eric, second.
I will.
By Tom. Any comments or questions? Eric?
So, I guess this is for Mr. O'Dean. It's, I know a number of assistant coaches are generally funded by the Booster's Club, but this falls within your parameters and your budget?
Yes, this will, this will not increase my budget at all, but we will, we will take this from my general budget that I have. Okay, so it won't, will not increase. And just to give you the numbers, tennis is very specific. You have 12 to play on varsity, and we had currently, we had 24 on our JV, and Lori Fried just was trying to mix in people to play, and every other school in the conference has a, has a B squad or a 10A program where they play on different days, so that was the need for it.
No, I'm thrilled we got the numbers.
Yeah, it's.
To support it.
Yeah, quality program, so.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
And we've got two job descriptions for the board, the first of which foreshadows another item that we have coming up a little later in the evening, but first of all is a recommendation from the licensed personnel committee to make a change in the job description for what was the director of curriculum instruction and assessment, and make a title change to assistant superintendent of schools. And please note that the only thing that's been changed on this job description is that title change. There is no change to the job, and this is not the creation of a new position.
Do you want to take both?
That might make the most sense, frankly, would be to take both of those together. Yeah, so then, secondly, later, under item I, I believe that it is, there is a recommendation to make a title change, which is that reflected on this job description, from the director of curriculum instruction and assessment, and to the assistant superintendent of schools.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the job description for the assistant superintendent of schools, as well as the title change from director of curriculum instruction and assessment to assistant superintendent of schools? By Eric, second. By Todd. Any comments, questions?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I have one question, and I don't know if it's, if it's in here someplace, or I'm not just seeing it, but it doesn't say anything about having an administrative license? Is that a requirement, or am I just not reading it correctly?
Have the qualifications? Yes, it is a requirement, and it is a requirement, let's say.
Okay. But I'm just wanting, it says a master's degree in advanced graduate work, but it doesn't say administrative license? I don't know if that should be in there?
I think that there's an argument to be made that it should be in there, and I think that we can take a look at this job description in terms of the actual meaning of the job description and bring that back in the future.
Okay.
I made a conscious choice because we are not trying to create a new position to leave the job description as it was written previously, with the exception of the title change. And so I do think that's a valid question, and, you know, I'd be more than happy to bring back this job description after reviewing it and making sure that it's completely up to date in the near future.
Okay.
Yes, I guess, as I spoke to you earlier, wow, I guess I have a couple of comments. I would prefer if we could have it a slash title, assistant superintendent of schools slash director of curriculum assessment and technology, for two reasons. One would be, I'd like to maintain the focus of this job, that it is focused on curriculum, because that is what we do here as a school district, is curriculum. I think that's the most important job that we have here is curriculum. So I'd like to maintain that, make sure that that focus is there on curriculum. And second of all, several of our policies refer to the director of curriculum instruction and assessment, and not superintendent, assistant superintendent of schools. So I guess those are my only two concerns.
Okay. Any other comments?
You know, I guess, I was, I was going to bring up something very similar to Tom and Rich, but, you know, I think maybe Rich has, has got a different spin on it, in that from a policy standpoint, I wanted to make sure that when, you know, if and when we had to replace this role, that we had noted or somehow acknowledged that we'd go back to, you know, the curriculum title, but, you know, I think Rich brings up a valid point as far as, as policy and making sure that somehow the job description ties back so that we don't have to change 10 or 12 policies. I'm supportive of, I'm supportive of the concept.
As, as am I. I'm supportive of the concept of the added responsibility under the current position.
And I guess I'm comfortable from the standpoint that curriculum is the top, the top responsibility in the job description, and that hasn't changed. I guess from, from that focus standpoint, I maybe don't have as much of a concern, but, but everywhere where we have curriculum, director of curriculum in our policy, that's something I hadn't considered, something I, if we could, you know, I would be supportive of, you know, Rich's motion to do the slash for now until we got maybe some of the other revisions that we wanted to put in.
Any other comments?
So, ma'am chair, I'd like to amend my motion to approve the title change to assistant superintendent of schools slash director of curriculum assessment until such time that additional revisions that have been discussed tonight come back before the board.
Any comments about that? Who seconded?
I will second that motion.
Who seconded?
I did.
Sorry, I saw what you thought about that.
I can support that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Is it, is it, because of the way this is written, it's basically the, that position, do we have to put the slash in there? I mean, are we gonna, are we gonna be out of compliance if those, if those policies?
I have, I have two thoughts on this. Number one, I don't know that it's, you know, going to be a problem to have that slash in there. Number two, we do make revisions to titles of positions, titles of programs, et cetera, throughout the district. After having served on a number of occasions throughout the last four years on the policy committee, I can say that we are constantly updating and, you know, bringing policies up to speed based on title changes remaining in the district. And so I wouldn't say that would be out of the norm, nor is it necessarily going to be a problem to leave a slash in there. And it's the fact that my esteemed colleague might have a pretty long business conversation, but other than that, you know, I'm not so sure that there's really a significant issue with doing that. So, you know, I think, I don't think it would be out of the norm to simply go with the change and update those policies as they come before the board, nor do I think it would be a problem to have the slash in there. So I think this is really a matter of what the board feels most comfortably.
And I guess my take was that this is going to come back before the board in another two weeks, then it's just, I don't know, it feels like a stop, it feels like kind of a stopgap solution, and so that's been the how.
So, to be clear, we go assistant superintendent of schools slash director of curriculum instruction and assessment?
So that's what?
That's the title that you're proposing?
I, I'd prefer just assistant superintendent. I don't, I'm, I'm not concerned about the other part because.
I would suggest, if we change it to slash, we're still going to need to update all of those policies in the future.
So then, then I think we should just, I prefer just assistant superintendent. That's my, if we're gonna have to, we have to go through all this again, and then maybe even change its title one more time. You'll have all these unused business cards later.
He's already thrown a bunch out.
Can I withdraw my second?
You can withdraw your second, I believe. I'm not sure where round of rules is taking this right now.
I'll withdraw my motion if Todd wants to make a motion.
I'd like to make, make the motion and leave it as presented as assistant superintendent of schools.
Do I have a second?
Second.
By Todd. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Some, some more.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see how the next one goes. All right. So, the next job description that I have before you is the marketing and technology integrationist, and this is a new position. This is a position that was board approved, or the funding for this position was board approved earlier in the spring. And at that time, the title for the position was a kind of loosely a webmaster, but in order to reflect what the role would really be today in a, in a current public school setting, this title reflects much more closely what this person will actually be doing. But, so this is a new position, marketing and technology integrationist.
Okay.
With that, I submit the, that would be your rule.
Do I have a motion to accept the job description for marketing and technology integrationist? By Tom, second. By Todd. Any comments or questions? Tom?
You said this is similar to positions in other districts, or this is?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's where we came up with the title.
We, we looked at a number of other districts to see, because it is a tricky position, because we would like the candidate who's applying for it to have some idea of what they're applying for, and we would also like to be able to communicate what this person does. And this was the best attempt at a rather tricky task, and yes, I can tell you that the entirety of this title appears in a number of other metro school districts, even the integrationist portion.
Okay. Rich?
Any of the other districts have qualification requirement of technology IT background?
Yes, to some extent, and that's where there is a little bit more variation, is how far on the side of either communications or technology the person is going to fall. And the way that this position is going to be treated is that it is going to fall under both technology and communications departments. The direct supervisor is going to be Kristi Muskin, and there is going to be a real focus on effective communication internally and also externally with the public. And that was deemed to be the most important qualification there. That being said, there's going to be, you know, integrating technology into that communication. There's going to be a role there for working with our staff, with social media, et cetera, and so we are certainly going to be looking for somebody that not only has a communications background, but also a technology background.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
All right.
Your show, man.
Indeed. And next, on behalf of the school board, educational support staff negotiation committee, I am presenting a agreement between the school district and the, and the Prior Lake Savage Area Secretaries Federation. And this is an agreement that runs from July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2014. As you can see, it is a three-year agreement with the terms of a zero, with the financial equivalent of a 0% increase in the first year of the agreement, and then two years of 1% increase as such.
Do I have a motion to accept the secretaries agreement with the district?
Make the motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any questions? Rich?
And if I remember, no major language changes?
That's correct. There were significant changes there.
Eric?
I, you know, I appreciate both sides getting this done. It looks like a, a good offer and a good settlement, and I appreciate everyone who worked together to get it done.
They were an excellent group of work.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
All right, and next, on behalf of the board's certified staff negotiation committee and also the educational support staff negotiations committee, it is my recommendation that the following agreements be approved. And there is an update in the online board.
Do I have a motion to accept the agreements and conditions of employment as listed? By Rich, second.
Second.
Tom, any comments or questions?
I'm just trying to get to the other one, I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh, Eric, did you find it?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just going to comment that I was on some of the committees that worked on these contract negotiations, and they were very well done, very respectful, and I appreciate coming to a quick consensus. So, and some of the ones I was not on, for the individual ones, Matt, you were very busy. It's quite a list.
Indeed. And just one more comment on that. What we're going to be approving tonight is the vast majority of the agreements in the district, aside from food services and the teacher group, which have already been approved. But that said, there are a couple more that will be coming through the next month, but this is the vast majority of the agreements in the district.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. One more.
All right, one more. On behalf of the school board's licensed personnel committee, it is my recommendation that the superintendent's agreement be opened one year early in accordance with Article 8, Section A of the current superintendent's agreement, and to make the following alteration, that there will be a 2% salary schedule increase for the 2012-13 school year, and a 1% salary schedule increase in the 2013-14 school year, which is commensurate with the settlements of them reached with other groups in the district.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the superintendent's agreement as described? By Eric, second. By Todd, any comments or questions? Tom?
Generally, I do not like opening contracts early, but considering that Sue Ann actually took hard freezes for quite a while, I think this is, she's due for this.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Okay, now we'll move on to unfinished business. And Julie, you'll be doing the introductions here? Or presentation?
We actually, good evening. We actually don't have a presentation tonight, as we did present to the board as a whole at the work session at the end of last month. As you know, we have a long list of deferred maintenance items in the district, and we've been working really hard with the director of operations and transportation in the district, and myself, to work through that list, and we've gotten some input from other various vendors that have worked with the district in the past. And what we would like to do, as you well know, we would like to enter an agreement with Nexus Solutions in order to help us to develop a long-range plan in which we can better utilize the financial areas that we can utilize for operations, health and safety, those types of things, to help us come to some conclusion with some of these deferred maintenance items that we have. They are in the audience tonight, if you have questions of them. We have, what will happen is in the future, they'll come up with a list of projects, they'll be brought back to our facilities committee to help us prove and go over those and come to some resolution as how we will fix them and develop those financially, and then they would come to the board for approval.
Jim Addy, anything, or?
Nexus Solutions is in the audience. Mike David and Grant Jones is here on behalf of that position in our faculty audience.
Okay. Before I take a motion, does anyone have any questions for the group? Rich?
The numbers I'm seeing here, the dollar amounts, those are upfront costs?
They'll be included in them as we go up those projects.
So, for right now, there is no upfront cost. It's just like when we start going, whether it's a turf or interior finishes, that's when they start, we start paying for that. Okay.
As they develop some of those projects, then we'll start paying them.
Okay. And, one more question. It says, the, the understanding is that we will contract with them for professional services required, but that doesn't mean that our own staff, if our own staff decides to do the work, then we're not obligated to go through them at all, are we?
We've had quite a long discussion with them, I assume. We'll, they'll help us develop our project list, but if there's projects that our own staff can do, that they'll do them, we'll not, they'll be no fee for that. If there's a project that requires minimal oversight, okay, we need to help us with something like engineering or something like that, they'll be a small fee. And then our big projects that we have, then they will assess a larger fee for that.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, do I have a motion to accept the maintenance proposal as presented? By Tom, second.
I will second that.
By Rich. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the revised resignation and calling for a special election. When we accepted Eric Pratt's resignation at our last meeting, we were under the assumption that we could, or that Eric could stay until the end of the, this calendar year. However, we were informed by the Minnesota School Board Association that that's not true, that there is a statute that says that you cannot do that, that you need to resign before the first day of filing if we want to have a special election. And Eric has chosen to resign before that, so there will be a special election, or so that we can have a special election for a two-year term to complete Eric's term, along with a regular election for the four-year terms for three seats here. So, what I'm asking tonight is if we can, if you will approve a revised resignation. Eric has put a letter in here that I think we've all seen. So he's resubmitted a different resignation date, and I'm asking for approval for that resolution, or for that resignation, and then approving the resolution for a special election. Do I have a motion?
I should make my motion then.
I'll let you talk in a minute, Eric. I need somebody else to make the motion.
I will make that motion.
Okay, Rich, second. By Todd. Now, Eric, if you want to speak, if I said it wrong?
So when we first looked at this, we assumed that resignation meant that I submitted the resignation. We had a hard day. What came back from MSBA was the seat actually had to be vacated, and that was the distinction between the two. So, that's my int-
had to be vacated, and that was the distinction between the two. So that's my intention and why the, why the change and why the misunderstanding. And so I appreciate you guys reevaluating it and voting me on.
We haven't, we haven't yet.
Do we have to repeat all the kind words we said the last time?
Please don't.
Well, all kidding aside, we will, you will be missed on the board. Okay, I have a motion and a second, and I believe it's a roll call vote on the resolution. So are these two separate motions? Okay, the first motion, then I'm going to start over. First motion is to accept Eric's new revised resignation. I need a motion.
I will make that motion.
Second by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Now I need a motion calling for a special election for a two-year term.
Second.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Tom. All those in favor, roll call, I'm sorry. Eric?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Aye.
The aye, Tom?
Aye.
That motion carries five zero. Okay, now we'll move on. Oh, before we do that, I've been informed that because Eric's resigning before the end of this school year, I mean, before the end of this calendar year and before the new person would take office, we will need to appoint someone to fill his position. And I am suggesting that we will need some time to discuss that at a workshops environment, and I'm looking at August 20th, which is our next workshop. Is that something, I don't need approval for that, do I? Okay.
I think that'd work out fine, because that would be after the?
That'd be after the filing.
After the filing.
Okay. Then moving on to new business, we have driver's education program. That, Leeann?
Good evening. Kara Gilby, our new program secretary, she's joining me, and we're here tonight to request your approval of A-plus driving school to be the provider of our community education, driver's education program. And it's based on the criteria noted in your board's packets on page eighty-seven to page ninety. Please notice that we did have five proposals, and we did a lot of extensive questioning and interviewing of the different proposals they met with us, and we based it on factors such as their philosophy, their cost, their customer service, instructor qualifications, training curriculum, parent communication, number of students behind the wheel that are in a car at one time, and a number of other factors. So we're here to request your approval. Are there any questions or comments?
There any questions up here?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the new driver's education program?
Make the motion.
By Tom.
I will second that motion.
Any thoughts? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the Green Core report, and I'm not sure who's, Jeff, are you?
That would be, that would be Sean Helmke, but he just stepped out for a minute.
Okay. Is he right?
As Sean is coming to the podium, just to give a brief introduction, Sean has been working with the district through a grant, the Green Core, to work with us on waste dispersal program and our organics program, and was originally, he came on board originally working with Kara Rickenberg and Jim Delwo through this process, which started last year, and his time is quickly coming to a close with the school district, working with us through the summer and the beginnings of the fall, 13th school year. And so this presentation tonight is kind of an overview of what's transpired in the district for the past year. I'll turn it over to Sean.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Once again, my name is Sean Helmke. For those of you who don't know me, and I'm just going to give a hopefully short presentation on Green Core as a program, the work that I've been doing for the last 10 months in the school district, as well as the waste dispersal program. So Green Core, as you can see, is a program of AmeriCore. It started about four years ago, and it's just in the state of Minnesota. So within Green Core, there are four focus areas, waste prevention and recycling, which is my focus area, obviously, living green, energy conservation, and green infrastructure. There are 31 volunteers, Green Core volunteers statewide, and each volunteer is assigned a focus area and host site. So this is just a list of host sites and locations, just some of them across the state of Minnesota. As you can see, a whole variety of nonprofits, local government organizations, cities, hospitals, educational organizations, and sites range from Bemidji to Northfield, but most are in the Twin Cities. We have the University of Minnesota, City of Rogers, City of St. Paul, just to name a few here, Dakota County, City of Red Wing, and then of course, on the bottom, Pryor Lake Savage Area School, Pryor Lake. So, once again, my focus area was waste prevention and recycling, and my objectives included waste reduction, toxicity reduction, recycling, organics projects, reduction of waste generation, improving recycling programs, improving organics recycling, providing outreach and education to all students and staff, as well as serving as an environmental resource. So I'm just going to go through some of the highlights of these objectives, some of the activities that I did. I think this presentation would take way too long if I went through every action that I took, though if you are interested, you can read my very detailed and somewhat dry final report, which I will submit to the Minnesota Push Control Agency in September. So, this first photo is of the SMSC, Shakopee-Metawakatin Sioux Organics Recycling Facility, and would fall under outreach and education objective. We took a total of four tours of the organics recycling facility. This one occurred in the fall and was open to all elementary students and staff. You can see Mike Witt here. He is the Director of Natural Resources, explaining the entire process of how they receive organics, what they do to aid in the breakdown of organics, how the process actually works, and then the environmental benefits of organics recycling, such as methane gas production and waste diversion from landfills. And the tours, I think, really provided, or allowed students and staff to see firsthand how their organics turns into compost, what it can be used for, and I think it just really added a lot of value to the efforts that they made in the organics recycling program. The next photos are just some examples of more outreach and education in regards to recycling and organics. There's an upside-down milk carton in the upper left-hand corner of the screen that I had junior naturalists make at all the elementary schools, and it explains what types of things are organics, recycling and trash, just to increase rates of recycling and decrease rates of contamination. And no contamination basically just means anything that's placed in the wrong container. The photo in the upper right-hand corner is of an example base sign that I made for all the high schools. I also created example base signs for trash as well as container recycling, just to make the waste dispersal process as simple as possible. And then on the bottom is just an example of a morning meeting lesson that I made and taught junior naturalists, and then had them intern teach all their peers at all the elementary schools. Just a really fun sorting game. We made pot bottle bird feeders with, let's see, with Kid Company over spring break. And then the bottom right-hand corner is a photo of worms. It's a vermiculture display that I created and toured around the elementary schools, explaining to students and staff how to do organics composting at home, and then the environmental benefits of composting. This next slide is just some examples of the recycling drives that I organized, trying to find materials that people wouldn't readily know where to recycle, just cell phones and holiday lights, child safety seats, crams, things like that. And this is just one image of many of the PowerPoints that we created for all the schools across the district, and this one just shows where students put liquids, recyclables, silverware, organics, and trash, just really driving the message home of sorting properly, once again, to increase those rates of recycling. And this is just an example of a before-and-after photo. This first picture is the high school cafeteria before I came, and as you can see, there really aren't any signs clearly labeling the containers. So really making this a focus in all the schools, clustering the containers as well as getting appropriate signage. So I'm just going to switch gears real quick and talk a bit about some of the financial costs associated with the waste dispersal program, specifically comparing 2010-2011 school year to 2011-2012 school year. So this first dark blue graph shows the costs for the waste dispersal program for 2010-2011, which includes trash and recycling, hauling from DSI, trash being the most expensive and recycling being the least expensive, and food waste hauling from Barthold Farms, which is more expensive than recycling disposal, but less expensive than trash. The second blue graph shows the costs for the waste dispersal program for 2011-2012, with the addition of organics recycling and the elimination of the food to farms program. So as you can see, there were significant savings in costs associated with DSI hauler services. Now, these costs do not reflect the cost of bio-bags, which are needed for organics recycling, but does reflect the four percent contractual increase per Pryor Lake Savage Area Schools DSI contract.
So, so a quick question. So you save $8,000, and that includes a four percent increase in the contract cost as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So without that four percent, what savings would have been greater?
Right. But I'll get to the next slide. So this next slide shows the cost differences when we include the cost of the bio-bags and the four percent contractual increase. It's still in there. The bio-bags unfortunately are very expensive. They cost about 90 cents a bag, but these bags are likely to drop in prices the next couple of years as more and more districts come on board with organics recycling. So if we are comparing apples to apples, and the four percent contractual increase from waste hauler fees would not apply from the 2010-2011 school year to 2011-2012 school year, the total increase in waste hauler costs would be about $137. And this graph just depicts the actual costs, not including the four percent increase, but including the cost of the bio-bags. So those are the costs. I'm just going to talk a bit now about the benefits, and then we'll wrap things up. The benefits of the waste dispersal program include not only significant increase in rates of recycling, which we will see firsthand, but also reduction of methane gas, which is one of the strongest greenhouse gases produced when organic matter decomposes in an anaerobic environment such as a landfill. We also see the benefits of waste diversion from landfills, creating less demand for landfills, thus creating more green space in the community. And then higher rates of recycling not only increases jobs, it also preserves natural resources and conserves energy. So a number of unseen benefits that are very important to consider. But this first slide shows the most up-to-date rates of recycling for 2011-2012 school year, broken down per school. And as you can see, most of the elementary schools average at 80% recycling rates, meaning only 20% of their total waste is being landfilled, which is really incredible, considering the average recycling rates for the state of Minnesota for commercial and residential is about 33%. This next slide shows last, last year's rates of recycling in blue, and 2011-2012 rates in red. And as you can see, some of the schools have doubled in rates of recycling, with the exception of the high school. And then these percentages right here just show rates of recycling district-wide, including the District Service Center. And you can see that there was about a 34% increase in rates of recycling with the introduction of the organics recycling program. So finally, I'm just going to leave you with the age-old saying of reduce, reuse, and recycling, which I think still really applies today. In order of importance, reducing waste and consumption is the most effective or most cost-effective and environmentally beneficial because it prevents waste from occurring in the first place. Reusing something is second most important since no energy goes into melting something down or transferring one product into another. And then recycling is third most important and clearly a much better alternative to throwing something away. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Rich?
Is this our first year of organic recycling?
Yes.
Okay, how's our relationship? We're going through the Metawakatin Sioux. Talk a little bit about that relationship.
Yeah, Mike Witt has been our primary contact with the Metawakatin Sioux. He is the Director of Natural Resources. He's worked really closely with Kara Rickenberg, myself, and Jim Delwo, giving us updates on rates of contamination, how we're doing. He's provided many, many tours for us. So I can say all in all that we've had a very positive relationship with, with the community and with Mike Witt.
Because it was on their website, and they use an example of our school district and their organics recycling to spur other companies on, so.
Yeah, they, they just opened up the organics recycling facility this past fall, which is one of the reasons why we went with organics recycling, because it was so close, and they're hoping that many more businesses and schools will get on board with organics recycling.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I'll move on to the co-curricular reports. Eric?
Good evening. I've got to get my vocals, it's killing me. All right, I've been told by two of my bosses that I better be quick tonight, so I will try to go quickly, you know how I like to talk. Something, all right, Mr. Wong?
Sure.
All right, going on to spring activities. I'm going to talk about the activities really quickly, and then go through survey, and then talk about our new website very quickly. Baseball. Baseball was nine and 12, fifth in the, in the Salsa Burman Conference. Couple of the highlights there, Matt Aaron's was on the All-Metro team, and hopefully you saw that he was the star Tribune scholar after the year, highly esteemed, that goes for the entire metro area. And then Mike Hadden was on the 3A All-State team. You look at that record, and it's somewhat disappointing. To be honest with you, they never came together as a team. I think this baseball team had the most talent since I've been here in my four years, but they never really gelled. And I take that as part of my responsibility to make that happen as a team, and it never really happened. So all in all, I think, you know, you look at it, and it was a team that did not reach their potential, which is too bad. Softball, 17-7, third in the SSC, lost in the section finals. They lost twice to Mankato State, or Mankato State, I wish, Mankato East. In the first game, we were down 4-3, bottom of the seventh, we had runners on, first and third, nobody out, and we could not get the tying run in. It was, it was a tightly fought game, and then the second game after that, they were pretty deflated and, and kind of ran out of steam on that one. But overall, outstanding year for the softball team. Boys lacrosse, 6-9, seventh in the SSC. This was a young team, and I think good things are going to happen with that. As well as girls lacrosse, you look at that record and you go, wow, that's, that's not very good. This team, boy, they played- This team, boy, they played hard, lost some, won, won goal games. We have two new young coaches, co-coaches, Emily Mulkin and Ellie Manelli. They did an outstanding job and, and they're really working hard this summer to improve the program. And I think there's going to be some exciting things to come with the girls lacrosse program in the, in the near future. Boys tennis, same type of thing there, very young. We have a lot of seventh and eighth graders on the varsity right now. They were 4-13, which is an improvement over their two wins from last year. So that's a, that's a type of program that I think will be on the rise. Not a lot of participants in the, in the boys tennis program right now, but we're hoping to, to improve that. Coach is PJ Priest, he had a, got a camp this summer for the first time, this is going on right now, trying to generate more interest with, with boys tennis. Adaptive softball, six and three in the regular season, qualified for the state tournament again. This is some of the funnest, funnest activities to watch, kids playing for the pure enjoyment of sport and, and it really brings you back to a reality check when you, when you watch those kids just go out and have a great time. They qualified for the state tournament, unfortunately went 0-2 in the state tournament this year. Boys track is one of our programs that, bless you, is on, on the rise, had some great things happen throughout the season, finished 18th in state. Steven Bruhl was second in the 800. Nick Brandt, fourth in state in the DISCIS, our 4x800 ended up eighth in the state. So overall, a, a great finish. I believe they were third in true team sections, fourth in the conference meet, and third in the, in the conference relay. So another program that's, you know, six years ago, right before I got here, there were 37 athletes, now there's over 100 boys out for track and staying out. Girls track, one of our highlights, they ended up sixth in state, section champion, state true team runner-up, first in the 4x400 in state, second 4x800. Taylor Shole, third in 1600. She had the lead going through the, going on the last turn and Maria Hallger from Shock, he caught her and then I believe it was the girl from Alexandria. It was a 1-2-3 finish, bang, bang, bang. Casey Bulmer came together and threw well in state, fourth in the DISC, and then Madison Lesmeister, eighth in the, in the 400. So overall, another outstanding season for Coach Giannikin and the girls track team. Our trap shooting program, which the sport approved, I believe it was three years ago now, at that time, I think there were 16 teams in the state. Now there's over 60 and the team took third in, in the state. They have to turn kids away. They, you can only have 45 kids on the team and now we have to have shoot-offs in order to make our team. So that's, yeah. But it's an outstanding thing and a great niche for, for those kids that, that are interested in that. Robotics, semifinalists in the, in the world competition, which is the highest that they have ever finished. And then our team was also state champions. The Minnesota State High School League picked up robotics this year. If you remember last year at the state fair, Dave Stead and, and our senator stood on stage and announced that it was going to be a high school league event and our, our team came in first. Now it's a team first, so it was, it was us and two other high schools that won the, the competition. That was fun. Mr. London and Dr. Gruber and I went down there for the beginning and the preliminaries. It was, it was a lot of fun. Girls golf, another program on the rise. We finished second in the conference this year. Kenzie Sexy, 12th in state, and she was second in the conference, which is a very tough conference. Boys, fifth in the South Suburban, and Mitch Holm was 35th in state. Our section is probably the toughest or second toughest in the state, so for him to, to make it that far was, was outstanding. Ultimate Frisbee, which is a club that we have, there's actually a South Suburban Conference within that, it's all clubs throughout the entire conference. Our team, we had actually two teams, and I think I need to amend this a little bit. We were nine and one in the conference, the only loss was to Apple Valley, and then they finished 13th in the state, not 16th. I just got the text this evening from Brian Olson, who ran that club. And he did an outstanding job. Huge, I, I didn't realize what a, what an interest there is out there for that. And on a side note, I met with the Savage people today on the Sports Bubble and I think they're going to run a program in the wintertime with Ultimate Frisbee for high school kids. Moving on to our surveys. Responses were down this year as well as the percentages, but you know, as you look at surveys, I think a lot of times you see, you know, people that, that have a little bit of a beef, like to, to put more input and the people that are fine, look at it and go, I'm not going to take the time to do that. But we had 113 parent responses. Communication, 64% impressed or satisfied. Most people liked the email as the communication and our coaches, I believe, do a pretty good job with that. The knowledge of the coach is the same at 72%. Working toward excellence, 71%. Opportunity for success is down a little bit at 65%. Strong offseason program, 43% agree or strongly agree, and I think that has to do more with spring sports. As I look in the, in the strength team, we're running kids through the strength team, there's, you know, five or six sessions of, of kids going through that this summer. It's incredible to see, even from four years ago when I got here and, and there was maybe 50, 60 kids going through, now we have, seventh and eighth graders are up here all the way through the, the high school. And along with that, you know, lacrosse has started more of a, more of a, a summer program as well. So we're trying to improve that quite a bit. Concerns me a little bit, 57% say the coach advises quality role model. That's one of the things that we try to emphasize with myself and the coaches, you know, we need to be quality role models to, to these kids. Enjoyable was actually up 77%. Fundamentals and strategy, down about 9%. And then professional manner, up 4%. So apparently they're not good role models, but, but they are acting in a professional manner. Student responses were also down. Prior Lake Going Toward Excellence, it's down about 9%. Team expectations are high and, and that's what we're trying to do here, is raise the expectation of our activities, so that's at about 8%. Big one here, teammates respect me. That's, that's something that we always try to emphasize within all the teams and that's at 88%. And that's, that's a good sign. Communication down, a little bit there, about 7%. And opportunity for success is down as well. We are getting more competitive, more kids are, are going out and that's why we're, we're trying to get other opportunities out there with intramurals and, and other clubs and things like that. Playing for the same staff is the same and, you know, down a little bit with enjoyability. Challenge Cup, we've talked about that, that's on our, our goals of the school and I'm sorry that that's not very readable on that. Prior Lake, we were 32 out of 80 schools in AAA and that breaks down the point system again. Our points were earned in adaptive soccer, softball, cross-country, girls, football, speech, both girls and boys swimming and diving, both boys and girls, track and field and wrestling. We would have been a little bit higher and this was my fault on this one. We need to dissolve our, our co-op with Jordan for boys swimming. The student from Jordan graduated last year and I neglected to do that, so Jordan got half of our boys swimming points. So we would have been up a little bit and I'll come back to you in August with that, dissolving of that co-op and that, like I said, that's my, my fault. Amongst South Suburban schools, we were seventh. We were ahead of Rosemont, Kennedy, and Jefferson in the Challenge, Challenge Cup rankings. To look, to compare to the Minnesota, not that we need to do that anymore, we would have been second behind Chanhasen. As far as SSC conference goes, we're looking at conference titles here and what you do is you rank the teams one through 10 in their order of finish. So the more points, it's kind of like golf, you want the least amount of points. Prior Lake would have been right smack dab in the middle at, at fifth. So we're about average in comparison in the conference right now. My expectation is that we move up and we move up on that very quickly. Conference realignment, this winter, I talked to you a little bit about some things going on within the conference that was happening. Jefferson and Kennedy were looking to leave the South Suburban and go with Chaska and Chanhasen to form a new conference. What happened there was Chaska and Chan asked a number of different schools to join with them and they were only able to get up to seven schools. So they did not want to start a new conference with seven schools, it's, it's very hard for scheduling and bye weeks and, and items like that. So Chaska and Chan decided to stay in the Minnesota and Kennedy and Jefferson decided to stay in the South Suburban. So as of right now, we are absolutely status quo, which is good news for us one way or the other. If, you know, if Kennedy and Jefferson would have left, we would have been strongly at eight. So, but they are not leaving, so they will be involved. Exciting times for us and, and I have to thank Russ Lees for this. We have a new website, new registration page, and I believe this is going to help promote Prior Lake activities for, you know, people outside of the district, people looking to move in here. This would be something that they would look at and go, you know what, this is the place I want to be. This is our homepage right here, so if you go to the Prior Lake Savage School District website and click on activities, this is what, this is what will come up. It's got, you know, Lakers in the news, it's got Tom Sharden from the Americans articles supporting Prior Lake students. It's got my tweets that are going out right here, I, I tweet scores and things like that and just, you know, news from around as well as the calendar of what's going on. There's not a Busch Club meeting tonight, but it pulls right from our calendar page and puts it on this, so people can, can look at a glance what's going on within, within the, within the activities. And then you have all the sports over here on the left-hand side, all the sports, they will all have their own page on this. So it's just, for instance, girls tennis, which is a pretty basic one, nobody's really done anything yet, but it has all the tennis calendar on there and then some highlights. And the coaches will be able to edit all this as well as any changes that go on, you know, especially for outdoor sports in the fall and the spring. You know how sometimes people are like, I don't know where to find the information. This will all be updated immediately. If you look at football, for instance, football has their own page within Engine as well. So that will go right to their page and talk about their fall sports registration, summer camps, et cetera. This is all, this page right here is controlled by the hubs, if you've been on the Star Tribune website, this is the same, Engine is the same program. So when games are going to be being played, the scores will be updated instantly onto our website. We will also have the ability, we've used iHi to video stream, we'll have the ability to video stream right on our website as well. So this is, this is an awesome part of it. If we go to registration and for, for those of you who still have students in the high school or coming up to the high school, this is the same, they got rid of me. This is the same registration that PLAY uses, that the Hockey Association uses and that Prior Lake Soccer Club uses. So all the information will be already in there. So when you register, it'll all already be in there, so they won't have to re-register. This is, this is registering for me, you know, my two kids are already in there and actually Ty's in there too. So it'll make registration a much easier process. And then, so parents are going to be happy and then on the back end of it, the spreadsheet will come out and much easier for, for the coaches to read and the coaches will be able to pull that right off the website to know who's registered and everything like that. So that's exciting and, you know, Russ has built this in probably the last three weeks even though he was just approved tonight, but he was going to town on it already. So it's, it's exciting and like I said, I think this is going to be a great promotional tour for, for Prior Lake Savage schools and for the activities department. Any questions?
Questions, Eric?
Give me my glasses. Thanks. All right, thank you.
And you're still up?
Still up. All right. Next up, and I think you have in your board pack, is the activity free proposal. The proposal is to raise the fees around the $10 range for most, most sports. There are some that are glaring out there and I, and I will go through those. Cheer, 150 to 300 dollars. What happened with cheer is originally they used to have two separate teams, a fall team and a winter team, and the registration was 150 dollars. Well, now it's just one team, that they have tryouts in the spring and it's one team all the way through. So that's why you see the 300 dollars on that. Hockey, you see raised 40 dollars. This has to do with the ice time. We take a big hit on that in the first place. Primetime ice is, is around 230 dollars an hour and practices and, and games get quite expensive with that. Golf, same thing. Our agreement with the Wilds, we are now paying for range balls and use of their driving range as well as having to pay for, for practice rounds, so that's going up a little bit as well. The other one is we're going full bore on the concussion management and the concussion testing, so that's why you see the slight increase with the other sports. Ticket prices will remain the same and they will be equal with every other school in the South Suburban Conference with the $7 for adults and $5 for students. And we do have the, the discounts for, for Prior Lake students with ID. So I, I need approval for that.
Are there any questions? Eric, these numbers still don't cover the cost of
No.
...playing the sport. Do you know what that percentage is?
The percentage, I can run those numbers.
Approximately, just.
Um, 50.
Okay, so maybe covers half of
Yes.
...for the kids to play.
Yes.
Okay, and the other half is coming from the district and the LABC or?
The, yes, the district and LABC. And, and I'll have final numbers on LABC in August, what they donated this past year as well, which continues to go up. They do an amazing job.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to accept the increase in activity fees?
So moved.
Second by Rich. Any comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Eric?
Thank you.
We'll move on to staffing proposals. Jeff?
Good evening, chair. To the board, you have a memo in your board pack that outlines additional staff, staffing recommendations for the 2012, 2013 school year. If you recall, earlier this spring, there were a series of recommendations that came before you for review and subsequent approval from the high school for 4.4 FTE as well as district-wide staffing. During that time, we continued to monitor student enrollment, registration, and class size for our middle schools and our elementary schools. And so coming forward, this recommendation this evening, there are a couple of key points we want to bring to your attention that are outlined in the memo. One is, as I mentioned before, enrollment and class size are two key pieces that we always look at when we're recommending additional staffing. And in the past, we've all, for the past couple of years, we've looked at a situation where stable and in some cases declining enrollment. And so as we've gone through our budget process over the past couple of years, we've anticipated that we may see declining enrollment in some areas, but our hope has always been that we're going to have stable enrollment. So as we looked at our budget projection for the 12, 13 school year, we also, earlier back in, in early winter, we anticipate that we hoped to remain stable, but anticipate that we may not see some increase. And as of today, we're here with a high degree of confidence and certainly that we're not in declining enrollment when we're actually slightly better and in, and in a position of increasing enrollment in several of our areas across the district. And so with additional enrollment, there's cer, that certainly is a good thing, it's something we want within the school district, but one of the, but when kids come into the school district, you typically do not see them all come in as fourth graders or all come in as ninth graders. They typically come in across the board. And so one of the things that we noticed when we're And so, one of the things that we noticed when we're looking at our class sizes and our registrations, we're seeing that slight increase of enrollment and we're matching that FTE to the class size that we have, but we're start, we started to recognize that we're seeing imbalances at the middle school and at the elementary. So, that's what's warranting this additional staffing request coming before you. But these are real students. These are not projections at this point, these are real students that the district is seeking. And so, just as a brief overview, for the middle school, we're looking at a .55. That is a position that's not one position, that's a position that typically we're, we're adding additional sections, most notably in the allied arts areas, health, facts, IT and also Spanish. With additional student enrollment, we were noticing some of our class size is getting a little larger and so when you add various sections of that, that does bring all class sections down to a more manageable level. At the board table, I'll draw your attention to a document that kind of provides an overview of what the staff class and sizes looked before this additional staffing and after. And with the middle school in that bottom portion of the document, most notably, most of our class sizes are within 32 and 34, 32 to 34 students. We have some that are below that, we have some that were higher than that. But the additional staffing that's being proposed tonight will bring some of those class sizes that were above 34 students in 38, 39 areas back down into the 32 to 34 range, so it does build that consistency across the middle school in all areas. For elementary, oh, excuse me, before I move on, the recommendation also includes an increase of, of media paraprofessional hours of additional seven hours, increased hours per day and as two people, it keeps the media centers open throughout the entire day. For the elementary, we're looking at additional staffing of 4.8. And again, those are for class size reduction, building of principals, they're still monitoring those enrollments for students coming in as well as where are those spots where we have that class size imbalance. And so, with this new pending approval, they will continue to monitor, they will, they will hire those personnel, but then they will also assign it to where in their building they need that most, they need that staffing to address the class size. In almost all of our elementaries, combination classes are being utilized and it is a, a way to maximize our staffing to keep those class sizes equitable across the district, but also too, it is a, it's a very positive educational experience for many students when you have third graders and fourth graders in the same class. And so, it's not just to drive you to middle, to, to, for class size reduction, it is a, it is a very good educational opportunity for many of our students across the district. And then also, we're noticing an increase in our population of EL students and that is at the secondary level. And so, you, it is recommended a .2 FTE increase for EL services. So, at the bottom, where the total recommendation for middle school, elementary and for EL is, is 380,805 dollars. Moving to the next page outlines the funding sources that we already have budgeted and reserved for staffing. And it is coming from multiple sources. As I referenced earlier in the presentation, budgeting for conservative, you know, wait, earlier this year, earlier in the last school year, we budgeted a conservative amount or maybe slightly declining enrollment, we reserved 1.3 FTE to be assigned at a later date should the students come. And so, we still have 1.3 FTE at elementary level unassigned. The board has remaining class size reduction funds, which are about 118,000 dollars. We also received compensatory funding from the state of Minnesota and that's funding used to directly impact class sizes or programs that, that where we have at-risk students or where we have populations of students that may have a high free reduced price lunch qualification or also for our EL program. And so, this is, that would be where compensatory funding can be used. And then we also have superintendent's contingency we use towards class size. And so, compared to what we're, the recommendations are, that we're seeking and looking at the total amount of revenue sources that we have currently budgeted and available for this, we are still looking at four, just under 50,000 dollars pending approval of these, of these staffing recommendations, just under 50,000 dollars that would be still unallocated and that we would continue to look at, monitoring student enrollment and making adjustments or to come back with the board, to the board if there were any additional staffing needed for class sizes once you start the school year. So, at this time, this is presented to you and we are seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the staffing proposals as described?
So moved.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Todd. Any comments or questions, Rich?
You have for the elementary school, 4.8 FTE for classroom specialists and four sections, I see, so is that .8 specialist?
Specialist time, correct.
Do you know what type of specialists or?
Take it out. Every time that we add a new section at the elementary level, there comes, along with that, a certain amount of specialist time for the students in that section to receive their FIAID, media time, art and music. And so, it's in all four of those areas. The students actually double up on FIAID and so there's twice as much FIAID FTE represented to that .8, but then there's an equal amount of media, art and music represented there as well.
Okay.
Any, Eric?
No, no, go ahead. Couple of questions. One is the 100,000 dollars of superintendent's contingency being used kind of drains that fund which is supposed to be our kind of emergency fund. And I've got to say that I think strategically that, that concerns me in that we lose some flexibility going in, knowing that if this is really being driven, I guess part two of my question, if this is really being driven by increased enrollment, we should see additional revenue coming in as well. And so, are we comfortable, I guess I'm asking the finance director, are we comfortable with draining the superintendent's contingency and, and losing her flexibility going into enrollment?
I believe last year we actually, at this same time or even later in August, we utilized the superintendent's contingency for this same purpose. And we reserved a little bit at that time and we used it later in the year and we're very consistent with what is happening this year with the superintendent's contingency. However, I just want to reassure you that yes, I do feel very comfortable with this recommendation and as we revise the budget, we will add that additional revenue from the additional students that we have. We're approximately, from this time last, we're comparing now to this time where we were last year, about 20 students additional. You know, it's always a flexible time right now and so we just have to make sure that we just want to stay on top of that.
And just one more note too, that as we've gone through this, this has been a very purposeful
prod, process where we have involved all of the stakeholders at every level and I do feel this is a very comprehensive plan and that we're not going to be coming back with an additional three FTE request a month from now. And so, this is a purposeful request that I think does fall within what we can afford and, you know, it is just to reassure you too, that we're not going to be coming back with this request in part due to in a couple of weeks. Yes, unless kindergarten goes up and we've got brand-new kids. But I guess maybe that's the concern is that we still have about 50,000 dollars. You know, a lot of this seems to be, you know, effectively we're bringing on, if I didn't have, right, one, one staff member for every four additional students, which seems like a pretty high ratio, but we did have classroom reduction.
Well, that and I'm saying where we were last year, it's not what we budgeted for. We're over what we actually budgeted for by about 80 students.
Okay, so it's plus 80.
Right. So, that's the difference. If I compare last year to this year, but also what we reached budgeted last, it will probably go down, but we actually have about 32 stu, more kindergarten students. We've seen an increase at the middle school, an increase in other areas also. So, we're, those students are coming in, those like I mentioned earlier, it is a flexible time for us. We don't always know how many students are leaving right now, haven't gotten a record request, but we always see an influx of students at this time.
So, which, so if we drain, if, if we, if we zero out the superintendent's contingency, which of the budgeted items between classroom reduction and, and, I'm trying to remember the other category we had, still has funding in it?
We're not draining the superintendent's contingency, we have about 50,000 dollars left in there right now.
So, that was 150, not 100?
No, it was 100. We would re, if we u, we'll utilize about 50,000 with this proposal.
If you look at the, the, we have the revenue sources prioritized and, you know, ordered that they would be utilized. So, we would be utilizing that unallocated 1.3 budgeted staffing for the elementary. We would then go to the class size reduction funds, then to the compensatory and use the superintendent's contingency fund last.
I get, I just have to do math.
Any other questions? I think I have a motion. Do I have a motion now? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thanks, Jeff. I think you have another one.
Yes. You have in your, this is an informational presentation, you have in your board pack the technology plan for the district. Every three years, the district has to submit a technology plan to the MDE for, for review and subsequent approval from the MDE. At the end of the plan, there is the letter from the MDE that, that does indicate that the plan has been approved by the Department of Education. And so, just to give you a brief overview, this was a plan that was taken on this past year by Mr. Malazza with our District Technology Committee to look at really what were the needs of the district. And you've heard a lot of the needs in board work sessions, but also at, at formal school board meetings, we've talked about some of our hardware needs and our, with the smart board, but also with, with the new computers and, and things like that. And so, much of the information that's the foundation of this tech plan has also been the foundation for all the projects that we've come forward with seeking board approval on. And so, the Technology Committee conducted several surveys of the staff, but also of students at the high school and those results are listed on our, on our district webpage and used that information to create this plan and then submitted to the Department of Education. And so, this is something that we do look at, we are required to do to the Department of Education. It is a plan that, that is in play and certainly can be amended as we go through and we need to amend it should circumstances change, but has been approved for the next three years, so.
Okay, and that's informational?
This is informational.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, is this you with generators?
Evening, madam chair, school board members. I have before you a request to purchase generators at Jeffers Pond Elementary and Redtail Ridge Elementary. Long-term, the district will realize significant savings in our energy use or rates, I'm sorry, rates of electricity charged from Minnesota Valley Electric. In addition to that, those buildings become a community asset where if there's mass power outage or something, we have power at a school that we can help do community assistance. The cost for next year would be 14,200 at Jeffers and 21,200 at Redtail Ridge. For the next couple of years, there would be some, some upfront costs that pay for the lease, but as the rates continue to rise, which they're trending upward dramatically, the savings become really big for the district. Last year at the high school, we saved about 90,000 dollars in electrical rate at the high school.
Do I have a motion to approve the request for generators for Jeffers Pond and Redtail Ridge?
So moved.
By Rich, second by Todd. Any questions? Eric?
It's been reviewed and comes with a recommendation of the Cellular Committee.
Yes.
Yes.
Do these generators kick in when, where you have high energy usage or when we have no electricity or how does that really work?
Well, what happens is that when Minnesota Valley needs to preserve the energy on the grid, we'll, we'll be asked, or they'll actually remotely turn up, turn the generators on and it's seamless. We don't know if they're on or off and we get notified, but it's seamless, there's no disruption of power at all.
Okay.
How, how often does a high school generator, generator get used? It's, if I remember correctly, it hasn't been very much.
It's fairly frequent in the summertime.
Okay, in the summer it is, okay.
Actually, could you come up to the microphone? My name's Craig Laufel, I'm Cape Town manager for Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op, so we're quite close with the gym. Last year, the, the high school generator, we ran for a total of 16 separate days and a total of 118 hours. So, and that was actually above our norm. We are, we strive to run no more than 100 hours a year. There were some unusual situations and quite a long heat streak last summer that necessitated a little bit longer runtime, but you can, again, our goal is to try to keep it at 100 hours.
Any other questions?
Are we seeing that trend continue now with, with this weather? Is that trend continuing?
That's on the high school, yes, yep. We, in Min Valley, we currently control approximately 130 of our members' generators accounts, ranges from small farms all the way up to Mystic Lake Casino. The high school generator is one of our larger ones, runs the whole high school. The two that are being proposed for the elementary schools, but again, power the entire school and they'd be on the same, they'd be on the same schedule as, as the high school is. And I'm not sure if I answered your question, but I didn't quite hear the whole thing, so.
You were wondering about this year.
Are you currently using them quite a bit right now?
This year, it's, it's been a little high, first week of July and we're actually running today. July 2nd, we ran and for like four, we ran about three, four days. We're already up to about 60 hours, but the majority of the runtime is from end of June versus July up through September and then we, it's very seldom run throughout the rest of the year. However, you do realize the savings every month of the year. And where the savings comes in is we're seeing increased pressure on wholesale power costs. We are a distribution utility, we don't produce any power, we purchase it from two wholesalers. And for the last, I've been with the company three years now and every year since I've been there, it's been a 5 to 6 percent increase over the previous year on the wholesale side. That's projected to increase out through a minimum of 2015, which is right now where they're forecasting through. And actually, 2014 is expecting to be a jump around 10 percent, so that's the reason we have a program like this, is to help keep our wholesale car costs in check and, and for the benefit of all the members really, but especially the members that own the generation because we're realizing a 30 to 45 percent reduction in their rate over the standard rate that they would be on.
I could add one more thing. The, the generators next year come under a lot of regulation, so now would be the time to do this. Lot of.
The EPA has put some, basically they are putting more, just like a car, truck, every, so periodically they will increase the emission requirements for fueled engines and they have done that with stationary engines which are used for generators. In 2010, that was, became effective, actually becomes effective next year, May 13th of January of 2013. And we have an opportunity up until the end of this year to install the previous we have an opportunity up until the end of this year to install the previous vintage generators and get them grandfathered in. And they're about a 40% lower cost than the new generators with the higher emission levels. And then also, because of this short window opportunity, Minnesota Valley had, we went to the board and explained the whole situation with them relative to the EPA. And they gave us a opportunity to offer some rebate dollars that would coincide with getting equipment in before the end of the year. So there's two, two extra added incentives, I guess, to, to try to do something this year, whereas putting something in after January of 2012, or 13, would be significantly more expensive.
Any other questions?
I just have one. So, are these going to be in the summary yet, or before, you said before, end of the year?
The, the way the ruling has been interpreted, interpreted by everyone that I've talked to within the state is, if the equipment is procured and at least sitting on the property by the end of the year, December 31st, then it will qualify to be grandfathered in.
Okay.
That, you know, if, if it ends up getting too late in the season to, you know, pick big ground or whatever for footings and so forth, as long as it's on the property, it will still be okay to go.
Full sites have infrastructure for generators. Full sites have that now.
Any other questions? Eric?
I'm, I'm trying to get my answer on this. So, if I just take Jeffers Pond as an example, the lease cost over 10 years, or the lease cost annually is 38.2.
The, the equipment is not provided through Minnesota Valley Electric. We brought in a company called Energy Alternatives, which is actually owned by Dakota Electric, our neighbor, but they're a subsidiary. And they offer an operating lease program where they install this equipment with zero upfront costs, so all the engineering costs, all the installation costs, all the equipment costs are included in their 10-year operating lease. And all the fuel, all the maintenance, all the, any penalties that they might incur if the generator didn't run when we, when it was called on to run and we needed it to run. They cover 100% of the costs, and that is their annual fixed lease payment. So, it'll be 38.2 starting year one, and it'll be the same through the end of the year.
So, in essence, I'm just trying to see if I understand the numbers. Eighty-six, eight in lease payments for 10 years. 2012 savings would have been 47.4, so it increased the net cost of the district to 35,000.
14, 20, 11.
Yep, yep, 35, yep. Okay.
That's this year. And then next year, that number starts changing, so that it becomes more advantageous for us at each year.
So what point do we break even in the 10-year cycle? Or what, what, when do we see in that benefit?
I think right five years.
Yep, yep. Again, based on historical wholesale power cost increases, I projected out that Jeffers would basically start going positive in 2016 and Redtail about a year later.
So about 45 years?
45, yeah.
So halfway through the cycle, and then everything else? And the life of the generators is more than 10 years?
25, 30-year assets.
Yeah, we have bicycle generators, generators over the house.
So it's a, it's a, it's a purchase lease?
It's an operating lease, this particular one to, to Energy Alternatives.
So it's, so at 10 years, we renew the lease, or at 10 years, we own the generator and we continue to see benefit?
The way there, that particular program with them works is, at the end of the term, you have a decision. You can renew an operating lease at a renegotiated price, which would likely be lower. Because there's no, you know, all their cost has been recovered at that point, and it's based on the value of the equipment at that time. Or have it removed at no charge, or purchase it at a rate that they would determine, and they, they'll provide a buyout schedule. But it isn't like a dollar buyout or anything like that. That would be a capital lease.
Is, I guess my question would be, if, if the life is greater than 10 years, and we believe the life is greater than 10 years, would it make sense to do purchase or capital lease? And is, is that an option that we've looked at?
It's definitely something we can look at. Right now, we just thought that this was the most advantageous for the district. It would probably cost, it would, cost us more with the purchase at the end. If we wanted to divide that out by 10 years, it'd be a higher cost.
I resign, but I think, this feels to me like there, there needs to be, you know, like we had with the, the technology lease, maybe a little more meat around the proposal. Conceptually, I think it's a good idea. I think there just needs to be a little bit more for the board to understand as far as the, the long-term financial implications. And, you know, the pros and the cons of, of a capital versus a, an, an operating lease. But conceptually, I think it's, you know, it's a good idea. And if we can get the savings to break even at five years, that's great. But then what happens after that?
So, are you looking at what it would, what the buyout would be after 10 years, with the cost, a rough idea what the cost of the generator would be?
Right, because this board, you know, the board down the line in 10 years is going to have a decision to make. There's going to be a terminal value, which should be determined before, at, at the time that the lease is signed, you'll set that terminal value. So you'll know what that is. And, but then again, what's, you know, what would, you know, what might be the benefit of the payback period of the purchase lease? I don't know. But in, you answered my, my next question was going to be, what's the expected line? If it's 10 years, then great, that makes a lot of sense. If it's going to be longer and, and there's a decision to be made, just, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see those options. But, conceptually, I think as a way to finance it and a way to get some, you know, it worries me that, that we're, you know, kind of cash negative on the front end of this thing, but I understand the engineering and the, you know, we'd have a large capital outlay anyway if we were to buy this thing outright.
Which is why we're looking.
Right.
Julie, I'm a little confused on what you said before. Is it more expensive to buy it after the 10 years, or is it more expensive to buy it now? So at the end of the 10 years, if we were to compare the two right now, we were trying to bring it at a reasonable price into our budget. So, we look, that's why we looked at this option instead of a purchase. Because if we were to look at purchase right now, that, that dollar amount for that lease would be much higher. So we're trying to be responsible with the budget amount that we have available to us. Okay, so, but what we're doing, what, what you're proposing now, the cost of, of doing the lease now over 10, and then the 10 years that we have to pay on it, is less than buying it outright now?
At the end of 10 years, then we would look at a buyout option.
And we don't know what that is, I'm sure.
I don't know, I'll stop my head, but we were looking through it certainly to find that out before we, you're kidding me.
Okay.
And I know that we could find that out before we were signing the documents.
I mean, I appreciate you're trying to keep any purchases within our budget, but if it's going to cost us a whole lot more in the end, you know, I think to what Eric's saying, that, that might not make sense.
I think it's similar to leasing a vehicle, a car vehicle. It'd be the same type of concept as leasing a car vehicle. As you lease it, and at the end of the term of your lease, you would look at what is the value of that vehicle at that time and decide, is that something you want to do or not? And that's what option we would have at the end of that term of that lease.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
And I, you know, let me just add, this might be the exact right strategy, I just don't think I got the right information to make that decision right now.
So, you'd like, you'd like to get that information before we go to, well, you want to table this, or, I don't, I'm not sure where you're at. Where do we stand with the lease of the high school? Are we at, we're at the 10-year point, is that it?
We want it at the high school, it's ours.
It's ours, we bought it, okay.
Yep. So we, what, what's right?
Believe the high school was installed at the time the school was built.
And that was part of a referendum, I think, wasn't it?
Yes.
And the difference there is you're paying for fuel and maintenance and all the operating costs covered. They're included in the software at least. So fuel costs go up, it's still covered, you're already paying that. In the lease rate, it's not that late, lease rate does not change. And that's where the savings come in. Like, for example, the, the high school, I'm just going to double these numbers, they're not going to be exactly accurate because we have two services there, and they're very close, but I'll just double them for simplicity's sake. And, 2010, you saved about eighty-one thousand dollars on the generator rate as opposed to the standard rate you'd normally be on. And 2011, you saved ninety thousand dollars on that rate. And then projected for 2012, based on six months of actual usage, and the final six months using last year's usage, you'll save about 100,000. So, you know, that's, it's about a 11, 12% increase in savings year over year. We expect the next, at least through 2015, to be similar in performance as this year. And the reason being is the generator rate is, is fixed, it doesn't change, it's not affected by wholesale power cost increases at all. Whereas, the normal rate is, has that exposure every year. And so, you know, say the, the five-year number is where now you become going positive, well then you can expect the next five years, you're going to be gaining, you know, similar increased savings year over year. So at the end of the 10 years, you're really going to be significantly ahead of the game, even though you're paying this lease payments.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the difference in the two in the break even was one of the schools required a little bit more wiring or a little bit more integration?
Yeah.
And that's why the five to six year?
My only concern, I think it's, it's probably, it's probably a good idea, and if there's a, you know, if there's no fuel clause for the diesel as, as the price rises, it's probably a pretty good deal. It just doesn't feel like, you know, as we, as we reviewed the technology lease, we had most, and we requested kind of all of the terms of the lease be presented. And here, we've got, you know, we've got the, the payment, but we don't know the terminal value, we don't know, there's, there's missing pieces here. And then, you know, I would think we'd want to look at the pros and the cons of, of, you know, purchase lease, because I appreciate the fact that the administration's looking to keep the, the current expenditure as low as possible. But then again, you know, we're setting up a board 10 years down the line to have to make a financial and capital decision. And, and I think we should just know that before we, we make that commitment.
Do we know rough cost on outright purchase?
The outright purchase.
The outright purchase, 240,000 dollars, or 241 at Jeffers and 256 at Redtail, the cost of the generators.
I was more interested in the terminal value at the end of the contract.
Right, right.
Yeah, I don't have the terminal values, because, again, it's not our lease.
You can get that.
We can get that.
Well, am I hearing you want to bring this back, or how does the rest of the board feel about this purchase?
I know, in speaking for the, the Facilities Committee, we, we didn't want to have a big capital outlay, and that's why we went this direction.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea. And I'm, I'm not real concerned. I know, well, with the current price of roughly 250,000 per generator, assuming that in 10 years, it's going to be worth less than that, at, you know, if we buy it out then, or we renew an operating lease, I think we'll still be ahead of, ahead of the game quite a bit. And I like the idea of, of not having a big upfront cost, especially with the budgets we have now. I, I think, I could go to go forward with this.
And this was reviewed and approved, or recommended by the building or the Facilities Committee, as you said earlier?
Is this anything NEXUS would analyze?
It's definitely would be part of our, you know, they would help us to, but include that in all of our savings, so we can utilize those dollars to utilize, how, to utilize those dollars for other projects. So we would definitely look at this, but as far as them installing it, no, we would all go through this.
No, I'm just saying, um...
What's the best way to utilize those dollars?
Correct, correct.
I think one of the reasons that why we looked at this was because we didn't want, as Tom said, we did not want a big capital outlay, because we needed those dollars for other deferred maintenance items.
No, I, I fully agree with him.
So that's why this was the best option, we thought, going forward.
Any other questions? I believe we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to policy, the first, we have a number of them. The first two are first readings, credit transfer at the high school. You, Jeff?
The credit transfer to high school is a policy that's before you, it's, it's minor changes to it, but it is, it, it reflects the change to our board scholar, the valid according, salutary and change. And so, this, the change that you see there is in the other requirement, section G, and it just indicates our distinguished board scholar as opposed to valid according, salutary and that's right.
I have a question. In here, it still refers to trimesters as opposed to semesters, so that is going to need to change, is that correct?
That will change as well.
Okay.
And that's if, under the guideline, section D, number three, references to trimester.
I believe it's, it references in a couple spots.
All of the places that says trimester need to change to semester, right?
And do we?
Any other questions?
There's the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment title in there.
That will help through on all the policies.
Okay, do we want to change it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions on credit transfer? Okay, then we'll move on to employee use of social media. Is that you, Kristi?
Good evening. Earlier in the school year, you approved some changes made to policies 515 and 524, protection of privacy of pupil records and student use of information technology. And the main changes in those were to update the social media used to an opt-out versus an opt-in, to make all of those uniform and easy for parents to understand and convey their wishes. And so, the employee use of social media just was updated to reflect the same language in those two policies.
Are there any questions?
I guess, I guess, I'm a little concerned from the privacy aspect about the opt-out versus the opt-in. So I think we really need to communicate with our parents up there that this policy has changed, and other images or whatever up there, students might.
Yes, we did begin that process last spring. Administrators did convey that information to their staff, as well as their PTCs, and began, I'm explaining that to parents, that it's going to be a change. And then again, here in August and September, there'll be another, you know, listserv going out from myself, explaining these changes and that kind of thing.
Maybe some, a column from our... Maybe some, a column from our superintendent might also be helpful, so.
Okay. Hey, any other comments? Okay, thanks, Kristi. That was the first reading. We'll bring that back for the August 6th board meeting. If you think of anything or see something that you would like more discussion on, please contact myself or Stacy or Sue Ann. Hopefully, preferably before the next meeting so we can change it. Moving on to the second and final readings. These policies were presented in an earlier meeting. The first one, I guess we'll take them individually. Policy 604 is continuous improvement of programs. I think that's you, Jeff.
This policy has gone, as you can see, has gone through extensive review and revision, and it brings into alignment a couple of different things. For one, it represents or brings into alignment the work of some programs of evaluation relative to the district's strategic plan and also the work that is done with vision cards. And so there are some changes here, and I think one of the key questions that came from the policy committee is addressed in section D on review of the process. And that was essentially the follow-through, making sure that the vision cards are being reviewed annually each year, that, that there is a regular review of those, of those vision cards periodically, either triggered by circumstances or at the end of five years, programs listed in the policy would automatically convene a committee and undergo a program review that's aligned with the, with the steps listed here. So this is board approval.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on like, on the policy for continuous improvement? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve that policy. Wait, Tom, second? Or Todd? Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0 on academic recognition. That's you, too.
Academic recognition is, is also a policy change due to the value according, salutary according change. So as you see there in the board scholar program, it just redefines what that looks like with the grade point averages and what honors students will be receiving upon completion of that given the grade point.
Okay, are there any questions on academic recognition? Rich?
Does our official newspaper, both established pace for the Pride of Lake American?
Yes.
That's correct.
Just here, this policy says it's only, the honor roll is only published in the Pride of Lake American. And being a savage guy, you know.
And you feel left out.
I know, yes. A lot of people.
We can add.
We can certainly add a savage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to accept academic recognition program policy?
Someone?
By Eric, by Eric, second by Todd. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Health and safety policy. Is that you, Jim?
As presented last board meeting, this is a policy we need to have for Minnesota Department of Ed to levy funds for health and safety. A new requirement this year.
And this was a new policy?
A new policy. It's a new requirement from the Minnesota Department of Ed.
Does anyone have any questions on the new policy? Do I have a motion to approve the policy?
So moved.
Hi, Rich, second. Tom? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thanks. Community education services program. The answer here. I feel like we've done this so long ago, I was hoping we ought to be here. Basically, this was updating a current policy, I believe. And also, there were some areas that were redundant, and so the policy was kind of cleaned up and refined. I don't really have anything else to add to it except for the strikeouts and highlights that are already here. I don't know, Matt, if you know any more than that?
I don't.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the policy? Do I have a motion to accept the policy? Eric, second. Hi, Rich. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thanks from the policy committee. Administrative reports. I believe Sue Ann is at home and doing well, having some pain, but doing well. So I guess that's her report. Are there admin, any administrative reports?
See.
Okay, any board reports?
None.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I guess I'd like to tell Eric the same thing I've said to many student council reps. Thanks for your service, and there's your gift right in front of you, your name plaque. You can take that with you.
Thank you.
Seriously, thanks for almost 11 and a half years, 11 years?
Seven and a half.
Okay. Future events is a joint meeting with the city of Pride of Lake on August 6th at 5 o'clock at City Hall. Our next regular board meeting is August 6th at 7 o'clock here. We have a study session on August 20, 20th at 6 o'clock. And we have a joint meeting with the Laker Educational Foundation on August 21st here in the DSC at 6:30. If there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion?
Eric doesn't want to leave.
I'll second.
My, reached, second by Eric. We're adjourned.
If I seconded, I can't.
What?
I seconded, I couldn't hold it out, but you didn't take it to a vote.
Oh, I did, I said.